Good afternoon. My name is Ellen Colvey. I am the president of the Roosevelt Island Residents Association, consisting of 12,000 residents, well, 12,000 to 14,000 residents, depending on what we use as our basis. And I'm the co-chair of the Community Coalition. We thank Cornell, my one of college Cornell, for having discussions and ongoing discussions which we expect will last forever with us, as long as this project goes on. And we do have concerns. And my topic today is our seniors, our disabled, our children, and the effect of trucking on their public health. According to the public safety traffic reports, Riox buses, MTA buses, vans for the disabled, and some 5,000 cars manage to share Main Street each day. Add to this, down our one narrow Main Street, an extra 1,000 vehicles a day during construction, and this is far too much traffic. This includes an average of 860 trucks a day. Roosevelt Island was designed to mainstream disabled people from two chronic care hospitals. In addition, since the island is handicapped accessible, a large group of people are now aging in place, and Roosevelt Island has become a norm. We have a large population of wheelchair-bound residents, seniors with walkers, and parents with strollers. They require special bus treatment, unloading the ramp and adjusting the existing passengers to make room for the wheelchair or the walker, and now the strollers. This all takes longer than a regular bus stop. And traffic behind the bus is forced across the double-yellow line onto oncoming lane of traffic to keep traffic flowing. Sometimes they have to stop short not to hit a resident who just crossed in front of the bus. Since the other lane is narrow as well, cars get very close to each other. The same occurs with ambulance stops. Many days, an ambulance or a bus waits for an hour outside the senior building, causing traffic to detour into the oncoming lane. Add to that public safety blocking traffic when giving tickets to people going into the oncoming lane, and large construction trucks passing buses into the oncoming lane. It's far too much of a threat to pedestrians and other drivers, really. Getting sideswiped by a barreling truck is really no fun. Please refer to the homologist reported in your packet from Ali Shwari, who is a homologist, about the health impacts of having diesel trucks and fumes going into our windows. Roosevelt Island buildings have really drafty windows. They do not fill very well, and this will allow the diesel fumes in. The zoning on Roosevelt Island that allowed for the density of high-rise buildings on either side of our two-lane street is like nothing else in the old city. The narrow channel that we call a street has a wall of windows towering over the narrow Cornell said they would barge if feasible, my last sentence. We are concerned that they will truck everything except that what they have to barge. That is the wrong plan. We want Cornell to barge everything except that they are forced to truck. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I just want to add that everybody's concerns are totally heard, and I think we've been hearing their commission, hearing their concerns and asking them. But my regulation was correct that the number of average daily trucks, the most in 2015 would be 67 per day. That's a high number in any year at all. So just want to get to maybe I'm misunderstanding the numbers, but I just I thought it was to where we tell. Misremembered. But that's it. Whatever it is, I want to hear the concerns, whatever. But I've heard a lot of numbers floating around. The actual IAS number per day is 67. Phase two is 36 per day. So, you know, it's different from a thousand, but we, you know, we understand your concerns. So, I give up this number. Are there any questions? Do you have information?
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. I'm Judith Burdy. And then Lynn from Shinazaki.
Good morning. My name is Judith Burdy. I'm president of Roosevelt Island Historical Society, and I've only been on the island 35 years. It's a wonderful island. I've lived there. I've resided in it on the island so long. But I really welcome Cornell taking on a proposal for the new campus, even though Goldwater Hospital is in my heart, and I'm on the community board of Golden Hospital. One thing that no one has mentioned when the economic impact has been mentioned is the loss of 1,000 jobs with the Goldwater Campus closing. These are 1,000 employees who take the tram, take the subway, shop in our stores, and support our local businesses. I know there will be demolition contractors and construction workers for years to come, and eventually Cornell campus. But in the meantime, our island merchants will also suffer because there will be lack of those customers. And they are good union jobs, and many of them will go to other facilities, but we will be losing them on the island. I've just passed out a picture of Goldwater Hospital under construction. This picture was probably taken about 1938. And if you look closely, you can see a crane on a pier. And I think also, I've been told, there's a cement bargeing plan on the site. This is what happens when you save all things in a historical society. You can't, if you barged in 1938, it may be a little difficult now, but you can barge in 2015, 16. The seawalls of Roosevelt Island have not been repaired or rebuilt in over 20 years. The riprap that protects the seawall is mostly gone and from wave action. It is certain that OEM may reclassify us. But in the meantime, our seawalls surrounding Goldwater Hospital are fragile. Our promenade surrounding Goldwater Hospital has not really been renovated in over 20 years. So we're looking at a beautiful campus that's going to be like in Venice. It's going to be surrounded by water. Because the road flooded and sandy, and it came up to the law of Goldwater Hospital. The road flooded the seawall. The promenade flooded. So without work by the city and the state and the federal government to repair the seawalls and the promenade, it would be really nice. But we have to have a campus that's secure, and the roads and promonades around it that are secure. Also, parking and traffic are a major concern. Talking in Manhattan terms, our Roosevelt Island Bridge is at 72nd Street. The new campus will be about 55th Street. So that's approximately a mile. So as you people said, you must have parking on the campus, because nothing is worse than driving down the street, dropping off your packages, driving back up to the garage, then going back to the campus. All the campus buildings also. One thing that's never shown in schematics are driveways and parking areas. If without sufficient driveways, parking areas, leading to the buildings, you know what one FedEx truck could do. It can stop the burrow. So there's another thing that has to be considered. What plans they're making to make their delivery areas, their service areas, large enough so that their equipment and supplies coming in when the buildings are built is not blocking the street? Because at the moment, it's going to be a one-lane street with one parking and, excuse me, no parking and bicycle lane. I, you know, I thank you very much for your attention, and I welcome everyone to come out to Roosevelt Island.
I have one second. Is there a question to you?
Thank you very much. Commissioner Kamtak, Tiven Abbott McNeil.
Wow.
I read that flat underbridge, T A M S, right? Those are the people who built the Roosevelt Island Bridge. Tiven Abbott McNeil and Smith?
Abbott and Carter.
Oh, I failed it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Lynn from Shinazaki, and then Jonathan Halpin, and David Evans.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We appreciate your astute and well-considered questions today. Thank you very much. My name is Lynn from Shinazaki. I'm a 22-year resident of Roosevelt Island, and I am here to talk to you about zoning issues. Because of the way the application is expressed, if Cornell complex does not happen, Roosevelt Island will have no voice in the future use of this space. We want to be sure that the zoning changes that are proposed are specific for Cornell and not another future development. The land grant to Cornell complex by the City of New York should not be available to other commercial entities. The Cornell complex, regardless of that building as its educational facility, they are creating a commercial enterprise with 33% of its land devoted to this commerce. Commercial and other noneducational applicants should contribute to the New York City and the budget of Roosevelt Island, which does not get funded by the city for this. The original zone for the land in question called for 2,500 parking spaces. We are pleased that Cornell wants to make an effort to defer traffic on Roosevelt Island and does not want to build that many spaces. Unfortunately, our community's parking facility, Motorgate, is located far from the complex which has been during the project. Because of the hotel and these code facilities that are happening in the original construction phases, we are concerned about the excess that these properties are going to create in terms of cars parking all over Roosevelt Island, and the drop-off issues for passengers and people. We would respectfully request that a sufficient amount of underground parking spaces be held to that original 500 that was in the original plan, and that the zoning does not move away from that original innovation. The community only has a limited street-side parking, and we want to have a commitment to pay for extending Motorgate as the need arises. With intermittent breaks, our community will be enduring construction for approximately 30 years. One-third of the Cornell project will have enterprises that will attract transient visitors to the community in high numbers. That population is not reflected in the DIS, and the DIS has consistently underestimated key numbers for it. The population, what I'd like to conclude and say is that there should be a responsibility and an accountability to Roosevelt Island and the city for the commercial aspects of this project. And after 2015, Roosevelt Island's tax monies end, and the island will not have a, will have to seek budgeting going forward from that date. We're respectfully requesting that this Cornell project be a part of the new project. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Good morning. She had a question too there. I'm not really appreciating your name. Jonathan Halpin, and then David Evans, and Joseph Strong.
Thank you, City Planning Commissioners, for allowing the community to speak on this very important project. I would like to highlight three things. What's being passed to you right now is a Riox Studies, Roosevelt Island Operating Corporation Study for feasibility for ferry service that was just recently completed. My name is Jonathan Halpin. I'm co-chair of the Roosevelt Island Community Coalition. In the past, I've served also on the Roosevelt Island Operating Corporation Board of Directors as chair of the Operations Committee at Riox, and also as chair of the Real Estate Committee at Riox. One of the things that happens on Roosevelt Island, we seem to go into sort of a Groundhog Day experience, because we're a very small island, and people don't remember us, is every time a new building or any kind of residential complex or commercial complex is built on the island, ferry service is discussed, and we want to look into it. And then when it actually comes to fruition seven years later, the next building that comes along says the same thing. So while I was on Riox, I'm on the Operations Committee, I learned that feasibility study, so we wouldn't have to look into it until you, the City Planning Commission, would have that information now rather than later. As Cornell has highlighted several times, and they've worked with us throughout the last couple of years on this, is that most of their residents hopefully will be taking public transportation. Public transportation on Roosevelt Island, although we have beautiful views and we have a beautiful tram that goes back and forth, is at capacity at certain times of the day. Columbia has done a transportation study, and it said that when the MTA F train is going 15 trains per hour, there's not much of an issue. The problem is that most of the time during rush hour, the MTA train is not running at 15 trains per hour. So one of the ways to mitigate this transportation issue, both for just general ferry transportation but also for barging, is to have the City Planning Commission and Cornell look into building a permanent ferry dock. As you're properly aware, NYCEDC actually did the AppSci RFP, and they helped fund the $100 million that's supposed to go for infrastructure for this project. And we would ask respectfully that you meet with NYCEDC and put into this plan, as part of the approval, a permanent ferry dock on Roosevelt Island that can be used for barging and also for residents to get on and off the island. We believe that this is crucial in order for transportation to work on Roosevelt Island, and we also believe that it will be helpful for the university and for the students once they, especially at the point that they reach 2,000 residents on the island. And if I could just say one last final thing, when you're computing for motorcade, the parking facility, and for the red bus, you determine a formula that is not as causation-neutral, meaning that if Cornell can say that for some reason they're not causing increased use of the red bus, or if they're not causing increased parking, then you develop a formula. Now, they can determine when the island reaches capacity, so motorcade and the other facilities and the red bus service can be in place. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for you. Anna, we have a question.
This may seem like a non sequitur, but someone might have died who might know the answer. How many other development sites are there on the island? How much bigger can the population get with projects separate from Cornell?
Okay, well, currently, it's being built by Hudson-related companies. There have been nine buildings. Six of the nine buildings are currently being, are being built. I have three built. Three more buildings, which will make that complex go from approximately 1,000 apartments to 2,000 apartments. And that should begin building as early as this year, over the next several years, so you can have as many as 2,000 more residents on the island with an estimate, usually a census estimate of 2.4 people per apartment. So you're talking about 2,000 people coming to the island, whether this facility comes or not.
And is that it for development sites on Roosevelt Island?
Yes, it is so far.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for commissioning the study so that we can have this information now. So just kind of flipping through the PowerPoint slides, it seems as though the capital cost for a pier location varies from 5.3 million to just over $7 million. Do you have any estimates of what the annual cost of operations might be?
Well, when we talk to the, as you know, the East River Ferry Service is currently operating right now, they've shown interest, particularly the New York Waterways, has showed interest in actually having ferry service on the island. NYCEDC currently subsidizes ferry transportation, but from our initial discussions when I was on Riox, it would not be a lot. A lot of different buildings are also interested in subsidizing the operations. Yeah, operation costs are not really the concern. It won't be the major cost. The major cost will be the dock. The difference between the two docks is the $5 billion does not allow for private craft to launch kayaks, and $7 million will allow that, which obviously would be a great benefit to Roosevelt Island and the city.
And was there any opinion as of yet, or was the locations vetted in any way, to talk about where preference might be in the community?
Well, if you look at that study, there were four possible locations, two of them being closest to, one being on the East Channel, and one being on the West Channel, being the closest to not only Cornell, but the main access points, with the understanding that if you do miss a ferry, you can then walk to another option. You don't have to walk from one end to the island to the other.
Any other questions? Anna, where's her?
Sir, if the jobs that are being developed right now are related, what is the impact in terms of traffic?
For the construction? Well, based on before, and this is one of the reasons why our group is really in favor of actually stipulating whether Cornell's going to have barging or not. Originally, Hudson Related said that they were going to barge, more like they said they were going to look into barging, and then it came to the moment that they weren't going to, and they didn't. The FDR for Freedom Spark actually did use barging, which was very successful. I don't know the construction impact, because it's different. There will only be three more buildings built, but it will certainly compound, and since they're being built at the same time, it will certainly compound on the amount of traffic.
Those last three buildings will be built around the same time.
Around the same time, yes.
Cornell was starting. That's exactly where I was going.
Yes.
And currently, everything is coming over the, coming in from Queens, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you're saying currently it's tolerable?
I'm sorry?
Currently, the traffic flow is not happy, but tolerable?
At the time of construction, I mean, it did not move at the same brisk pace. Those six buildings were built, I believe, over five or six years. So it wasn't at the same kind of pace as this. It's hard to determine. Also, it was built at a different time for the island, the same amount of population wasn't there. So it--
Is three more buildings coming in the next few years?
Yes. And I believe, and I would be very much in favor, and I think we would be in favor, of having a separate, independent entity deciding whether barging occurs or not, not a particular entity that has to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your work. David Evans, and then Joseph Strong, and then-- I'll tell you later.
Good afternoon. I'm Dave Evans. I've been on Roosevelt Island about four years, and I'm a supporter of Rick. It's typical bringing up the rear, so mostly what you'll hear is perhaps could be construed as a summary. Let me first thank Cornell Tech for thus far having responded faithfully to some of our requests, and of course, a big shout-out to CBA and the President Springer, who advanced their conditional approval of this project, given the concerns that still remain. With respect to planning for and implementation of the project, I posit and may now summarize that there are alternatives available to better mitigate risk to islanders. And two, the state of New York, given its unique relationship with the island, needs to be heard as part of or in parallel to the ULR. Time today only allows me to speak to risk mitigations. As a former member of the armed forces, I have a special appreciation of and respectful risk. With more planning, we mostly know the risks to our employed personnel, but sometimes the unexpected occurs. When you purchase a new car, acceptable risk can become unacceptable. Think recall. I have problems with risks deemed acceptable for the community of Roosevelt Island. Let me explain. Almost daily between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, I walk alongside or on the street. I see invaders in their strollers, homeless citizens barely making their way, men in wheelchairs, some breathing devices. I see schoolchildren walking to school, from school, at recess, enjoying fresh air and parks. Now I fast forward to the years 2014 and likely beyond 2038. A chill comes over me. The tranquil environment is no longer there. Our small, tight corridor, Paul Main Street, has changed due to a bevy of activity that has placed our residents at risk. A stream of heavy diesel trucks, public construction-related vehicles, and a barrage of other traffic compete for limited space to and from the southern parts of the island. I see needed emergency vehicles trying to get to the sick and elderly, and their operations under slow. Yet this whole use of the corridor is considered by some as acceptable risk for the project. Moving forward, we should not rely upon risk applications that find acceptable even the smallest nightmare on Roosevelt Island. We must hedge against the unexpected. We must make adjustments to the maximum extent for severely crippled risks. The risk of increased accidents involving our youth, our elderly, or other persons in a wheelchair being pinned underneath the vehicle. We must cripple risk, among other things, that can lead to increased sickness due to noise, dust, fumes, and other pollution penetrating our many low-energy residential homes along Main Street. Risk that openly stresses our bridge, our ramp to the island, our roadway, and the risk of and from critically delayed emergency responses. You can help, Commissioners. You can help islanders as part of this process by having an aversion to risk that impacts lives and tranquility. This is why many of us respectfully ask that you put down a marker, or markers, in support of construction-related activities that reduce environmental and roadway impacts, and that will help free up our women on the street. You have heard these risk mitigators mentioned today. Barging, preferring semen on-site, ensuring adequate parking, properly located on the island, properly situated air quality monitors, and enhanced security. If I may, Colonel Cameron, I'd like, today is February 6, 1970. I looked for something that was significant on this day. I found that for New York, The Beatles' album, Hey Jude, was released. And it says in essence, "Take a sad song and make it better." I'd ask that you don't make it bad, just please help us make it better. So I would like to invite you, each of you, please come to our island and walk Main Street with us, any of us. And I'd also like to thank you for your efforts. As a former serviceman, I'd like to salute you for your efforts.
And I thank Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Joseph Strong. Did you have a question? Oh, none. Thank you, sir. Joseph Strong, and then Geronimo Solana, and then Allison Reddick.
Hi. I'd like to submit these. Hi, my name is Joseph Strong, and I'm co-director for Roosevelt Island, here to testify on the behalf of Benjamin Kalos, a Democratic candidate for New York City Council, seeking to succeed Jessica Lampin in representing the Upper East Side and Roosevelt Island, where the Cornell NYC Tech is currently seeking approval for this ULR. In lieu of reading our full testimony, which I provided, I will read a brief summary and have submitted the full testimony in writing. Our testimony focuses on how the City Planning Commission can use your power to approve the application before, before you, with modification under Section 206. Our key points are sustainability means that Cornell NYC Tech must support their own infrastructure by supporting Riox. Rethinking long-term zoning and phasing of Cornell Construction. The Cornell NYC Tech campus must be fully accessible for those disabled, and amending the ULR's promising 20% open space to confirm with Cornell's public presentation of the ULR of more than 35% open space. The Cornell NYC Tech campus must support access by bicycle and vice-sharing. We believe the final three points are self-explanatory, and we will briefly summarize our first two. Substainability means that Cornell must support their own infrastructure by supporting Riox. Cornell is receiving billions of dollars in windfall in the form of 12.5 acres of Roosevelt Island land. However, Cornell's campus, unlike the building already on the island, will not contribute any funds to Riox, which does not receive any funding from city or state. Furthermore, unlike the other land lease held by the developments on Roosevelt Island, Cornell will not pay a penny for its 99-year lease of its 12.5 acres of land, which represent 8.5 of the 147 acres of land on Roosevelt Island. Cornell's current short-sighted zero-sum approach has them positioned against existing residents relying on a sweetheart deal that does not require the university to contribute a penny towards Roosevelt Island infrastructure, while seemingly failing to realize that the same problems that current residents express will be magnified for Cornell's own constituency after construction is complete. A Roosevelt Island without adequate transportation, because they cannot afford to maintain the tram helix and roads, will be a Cornell campus that is inaccessible. It will--
Especially if you want to just, like, have it including 31's jump in and including Ben's. But we'll be sure to read them as soon as we know it.
Okay. Please approve Cornell's ULR with the amendments presented by the-- Please approve Cornell's UAR with the amendments presented by the community and in order to provide a reasonable planning and orderly development on Roosevelt Island with adequate, appropriate infrastructure for existing residents as well as Cornell.
Thank you for reading testimony about the candidate and thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Geronimo Saldana and then Allison Reddick.
Good afternoon, Chair of the Commission. Thank you for your key to the address. I will be reading a statement for one of our members who's unable to say. His name is Louis. My name is Louis Medina.
If you have a very specific rule, why don't you just give that testimony?
Sure.
Because you can only speak if you're the one side up.
And then that is I will speak on... My name is Geronimo Saldana and I am not a security officer.
No, you can't. You can't speak on your behalf. You have to sign out and order.
Wait, yeah. So I will speak on my behalf. I will testify my case. This is from me to you and to the commission. I hope you... I did tell you. I did. This is my... She just called.
You have to call. You'll come back. Your company's on the...
No, you call. I am drunk. That's...
Are you drunk?
I have run away. I can show you my license. I have been 33 years. I have been running. I am not anymore. I now am speaking on behalf of...
Geronimo, we are very glad to meet you.
Yes. Very glad to meet you. So thank you again. My name is Geronimo. On behalf of the 70,000 SAU local 32PJ members that live and work in New York City, I am here today to express our support for Cornell University's planned New York City Tech campus. Cornell has promised that the new campus will result in thousands of permanent job opportunities with good wages and benefits. These will help New York families survive in these tough times while sparing economic growth. They have pledged 15% of the new employees will be drawn from members of our community that are currently living below poverty. The new campus will also provide educational opportunities with an emphasis on sustainability and will further strengthen New York's growing tech industry. The institute will serve the community with a campus that is open to the public and programming for seniors and residents of the Roosevelt Island community as well as for 10,000 New York City schoolchildren and hundreds of teachers. As we all know, not every institution is committed to the creation of high-quality jobs that allow workers to care for their families and provide for their city. But Cornell is committed to creating quality jobs, both blue collar and white collar. Tens of thousands of new permanent jobs we generated and that will have a positive impact for all New Yorkers. We need to support responsible community partners like Cornell and recognize projects like this one that will help building service workers at this project. Janitors, residential workers and security officers can help an institution of this level run earned wages and benefits if they need to get a foothold in their own path. For these reasons, I and the 32PJ urge the City Planning Commission to support this project. Thank you all very much.
Allison Reddick and then Paul Fernandez and then Jennifer Hensley.
Good afternoon. My name is Allison Reddick. I'm with AKRA, the lead consultant for local or apparent environmental advocacy. So I can answer any questions you might have on the DEIS, if there are any remaining. And then I should note that any interest from Cornell is here to answer any questions that are specifically to barging.
Michelle Delus.
Hi, thank you for coming. Can you just speak to the issue and obviously we've heard, I think, a number of quotes testify specific to the uniqueness of Roosevelt Island and that the impacts that are going to happen as a result of this project, how they uniquely impact this community as opposed to looking at other areas of the city, whether it's transportation impacts, construction impacts. And can you speak to how the DEIS addressed that in this case?
Sure. The DEIS looks at, depending on how you count, 20 or 20-plus environmental analysis areas consistent with the secret technical manual and secret technical manual methodologies. So for example, community facilities, study areas are drawn that are specific to the Looking at community facilities, looking at schools in the school district, which includes the Roosevelt Island School. Visual and historic resources are very specific to on the island. There's a neighborhood character chapter that brings and draws those different impact analyses together, specific to neighborhood character. Looked at libraries, also on island. Transportation is looking specifically at the F train. Cornell, the DEIS does not identify significant impacts. The S trains, using sidewalks to and from the sites, looking at parking, those effects on island. On the traffic study area, because people would be driving to and from the island, does extend both on the island, we look at four intersections on the island, we've done an additional 10 intersections in Queens. So each analysis is very specific to study area that would likely be affected.
Can you maybe speak to, just narrowing in on one area in particular, since I jumped out at the end and that was related to the students? It seems that the DEIS was off by about 100 students, which is already significant.
Right. So the DEIS uses published sources, I think it was using the latest Department of Education school enrollment numbers. We'll check and see if the FEIS needs to be updated to reflect that number certainly. But no significant adverse impacts were identified on schools from the increase in population.
The assumption, given the builders here, obviously all the Hudson-related project, all those assumptions are folded in as well.
Exactly. And they are folded into the 2018 analysis here.
Any other questions? Yes.
So it's your conclusion that the project will have no impact traffic wise on Roosevelt Bridge specifically, eastern traffic coming from Manhattan?
Onto the Queens Borough Bridge? Yeah, the Queens Borough Bridge isn't called out specifically in the DEIS, but there are intersections that capture traffic that may be coming from there and two are from the site. So there are traffic impacts that are identified and mitigation measures are also identified. Cornell is also working with the Department of Transportation because there were several unmitigated impacts identified in the DEIS. And so mitigation measures are being explored to address those random intersections.
Anna?
We've heard testimony about a couple of things I wanted to ask you about. One is about the possibility, which actually seems realistic to me, that people will come to the construction site or to the completed development, drop off stuff, drive back to motorcade, then get on the bus, so it's a double trip. Did you consider that? And my second question is about the condition of the helix and whether that plays any implication on your... that was factored into your analysis about how many trucks could pass over the helix in a certain period?
Okay, so the first question about trips. No, I don't believe that it's considered that people would be crossing the site, going down, going back motorcade. It's parking at motorcade, making the way to the site either on foot or using red buses or two motorbuses.
So you didn't factor that in?
No.
Okay. And the next is about the condition of the helix?
The condition of the helix. So the DEIS, the construction analysis did look at the truck trucks going over and so the bridge restrictions that they're able to wait when the stations were taken into account when terminating the mixed trucks that would be coming to and from the site. Not the... Bridge complexes.
The bridge has a certain capacity.
Right. And so that's the cost we refuse to terminate the mixed trucks that would be coming to the site for construction period.
Did you look at actual operating conditions across the bridge and helix to see whether that matched, you know, the authorized capacity?
Not as part of the DEIS.
Any other questions?
Let me break it down into components. Bridge, we heard earlier that the bridge had been worked upon. Do you know whether the work upon the bridge was remedial or was it upgrading the bridge?
I don't know this specifically.
The bridge.
Would you apply to the helix? That was a reference to the helix's particular work with the deterioration. We know or has anybody on Cornell's side as yet determined the exact condition of the helix in terms of what it required, repaired and or upgraded prior to this lot of destruction?
Not as part of the DEIS, but I'll defer to Andrew.
Okay.
Michelle, you have a question? Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Paul Fernandez and then Jennifer Hensley and then Andrew Holway. Paul, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, President of the Commission. My name is Paul Fernandez. I'm the chief of staff of Building and Construction Trades Council of New York, an organization that consists of local affiliates of 15 national and international unions representing 100,000 members of New York City. I would like to testify today in support of the application by Cornell.